All right, we're ready. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Plattville for Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, and we'll start with roll call.
Amy Seboth-Wilson.
Present.
Mike Den.
Here.
Barbara Das.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
Dick Bonin has been excused. Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
First item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion in action. A is minutes of the December 22nd, 2014 regular council meeting. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for December. D, appointments of boards and commissions. There aren't on this evening. E is licenses, one-year and two-year operators licenses. They're in your packet. And F is Resolution 1501, official appointment of 2015 city assessor. Is there a motion?
I'm both to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Seboth-Wilson.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will note at this time that we take time for citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We do have two, and for anyone in the office who, in the office, in the audience who would like to make a comment, please complete this green sheet, which is on the desk back there. First person is Jack Ludke, citizen comments, Main Street.
It's almost like going to trial here, walking past all these folks. My name is Jack Ludke. I'm the executive director for the Main Street program, and our office is at 20 South Fourth Street here in Plattville. I'm here tonight just to speak to you a little bit about our program and what we had accomplished last year and what we're looking to do going forward in the new year. I know someone on the council had requested that we present some information to you folks. I know many of you are very intimately involved with the Main Street program and know some of this, so I thought I would begin by just giving you and the general public an update on what we are doing. The Main Street program was started in 1999 and as, basically, as a nonprofit organization at a time when in Plattville there were a lot of empty storefronts along Main Street, and many of the buildings were in disrepair. The program consists of four elements, basically, and those elements are the organizational group, which deals with volunteers, operations of the office in fundraising; the design group, which deals with how the district really looks, the historic character of the district. We work with the Historic Preservation Commission, which Alderman, Killian chairs, to see that if anything is being done in the downtown area, that we would like it to conform to the historic character of the particular building that's being worked on. They also look at the artistic opportunities for things like the mural program in the downtown area, things that would be, increase the cultural awareness of folks that come to the downtown district. The promotions group, I'm sure you're familiar with several of the events that we do put on, like Sweet Treats, the Music in the Park series, which the council helps fund, and also the, this last year, a unique pop-up food movie presentation for gardeners and the use of locally grown, healthy food in the immediate area of Plattville that was held in the auditorium here, which was a great success, our first run at that. So we'll probably be doing something like that in the future as well. The last element is an economic restructuring group, and they're the group that works with the individual businesses that exist on Main Street or that are looking to come on to the Main Street district. Right now, we have very little empty space, if you will. You always want to have an inventory of empty space so that if there is a new opportunity, you have someplace to put them. We, right now, are at about 95 percent of the occupied, occupiable square footage on Main Street is full. Now, Main Street District also encompasses the McGregor Plaza, and there are two openings there. That's where the other 5 percent comes into play. Some of the things that we look at is what are we impacting the city in the course of our year? How did we show something that is a return on the investment that both you folks make and the private individuals that invest in the Main Street program? We are not a dues organization. We represent everybody on the Main Street District in all the things that we try to do. You don't have to have a membership to get the benefit of our work. One of the things that we had been able to put together that also helps with the look and the feel of the district is a, working with the RDA, we were able to put together a grant program where people who have businesses that want to put up awnings on the front, replace their awnings, paint the front of their buildings, minor repairs that look like an enhancement of the curb appeal. The RDA set aside $20,000. We've had 11 people who have taken advantage of that, and they're matched on a dollar-for-dollar basis up to $1,000 on the improvements. They have to put money in to make it happen as well. So, and that's a continuing program. So we'll hope to have some people added to that. I note tonight in the audience, Ryan Hedinger is here. He was an intern that worked on a program that we had last year, a very successful program, and I want to acknowledge Ryan again. He was written up in the Telegraph Herald about the program, and that was the relamping program under the Focus on Energy Group. And 15 businesses have, I'm sorry, 13 businesses have relamped their entire stores, and our recipients of energy savings believe that the payback period on that for most of them is less than six months because of the minor investment and the cooperation with the Focus on Energy folks, and we have had a lot of very positive feedback. And it's also a thank you to Amy Wilson, to, who was the one on campus who got the intern in place and worked together with us, so it was a great partnership to make this happen. Couple of the other things that have impact, we also had an intern doing Google mapping for some of the stores because we found out that locations on Google for some of our businesses were all over town, not where they actually were located. So we had that started, and that will be a continuing program as well. The Music in the Park, you're all familiar with. We felt was very successful. Our estimates were that even with the loss of the first one due to the tornado, there were over 2,000 people probably enjoyed the eight weeks of Music in the Park last year. We have reached the level, and I'm not sure what that level means. Barb would know better than I, of course, but we have reached the level of a $10,000 entry point, am I saying that correctly, to establish the Cushman Music Fund, which we hope will be a feeder program that eventually we'll be able to draw on to fund Music in the Park. So it's an ongoing thing, and we'll take the effort away from the city to fund that. We have had great success this year with the senior nutrition, senior in the Food Pantry Client Nutrition Program that we put out. Normally, we issue $5,000 to $6,000 to $7,000 worth of vouchers each year. Last year, we did $6,000 worth of vouchers, and we had a 98 percent use factor on those. So people are using them, and the seniors have asked for more. So Gary Olson, who's the market manager, has been out there pounding the bushes to raise more money to fund this program, and just today turned in checks over $1,000 from people, private individuals, who've contributed to this. So it's an ongoing program that we're very proud of, and we'd like to see it always continue. The need is very, very substantial here, particularly among the seniors. We had a new welcome faculty party that some of you attended this past December, and it was for the Engineering College, and it was a family affair that allowed the new faculty members, I believe we had like 50 people there and probably 15 children, so the families all got to know each other, and the university was very cooperative in making this happen. And it is more of a tie to the university community, to the city of Plattville. Many times, a trailing spouse or the family is kind of forgotten. When someone comes to town and takes a job at the university, we think this is a way to, and we like to do it with other colleges there, a way to continue that connection and make the families feel welcome. We've had, over the last two and a half years, a real effort with the rebuild of Chicago's Best for two reasons. Number one, we want to see a viable, longstanding business in Plattville come back to life, and also, we do not want to see the demise of that historic building. And just today, we've started to make some major steps forward again, and we think we have a path through, there's some light at the end of the tunnel, and by, we also have a contractor working in there, and by the end of next month, we should, God willing, have a plan to, in place to move that forward. So some good news today on that. In conclusion, I'd just like to say, we have had a review by Lady Kathy LaPlante from the National Main Street Council, and also by Aaron Welty from the state, who were in here a couple of months ago, and they took a look at the program that's periodically done to see what progress has been made. But Plattville, since it's been a 15-year program, has, we wanted more than just a review of what we've done, and they provided a report, which I have a copy of here for you tonight, that details what they saw, how things are done right in the program, and how it could move forward, and they also made some suggestions to us on how we can improve that program. So I will share that with you, and in conclusion, I'd just like to thank you for your financial support, but more importantly than that is the staff support that we get for projects downtown, all the way from simple things like the music on Main Street at the holidays to putting up the Christmas wreaths. Your staff and the police department, everybody, is very helpful. We couldn't do some of the things we do without the cooperation of the staff. So I thank you, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a couple for you. One question I have, because I don't know anything about this, when businesses come and go, if they're different types of businesses, do the tax base change on that property at all with the different businesses in there that includes a lot more money involvement, more personal property?
Well, personal property tax would change, yes, if there were, if there were more of that. I don't know how the assessor judges that. I'm not familiar with it, Mike, but I would make that assumption that if you have more inventory or more equipment, more personal property, your tax base would go up on that.
One other question. Do you guys ever get into or utilize the FISA grants? I talked to a couple of friends of mine in Dubuque that utilize those quite a bit, and they have a lot of, got a lot of good luck with them. It's a dollar value thing. I believe it's for every dollar you spend, you get two back for doing exterior work outside of buildings.
Oh, the facade grant, yes. The RDA has funded a program, and they will make facade loans, not grants, but loans to, very low-interest loans, to do the fronts of the buildings. They also have grant money available to help with the interiors on some of the buildings, but it's primarily for facade. And in Plattville, the buildings, like along Second Street and some of the older buildings on Main, obviously are going to need that, particularly because they're all brick and they're very soft brick, so they're going to need some work on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time, and I will just pass these on.
Thank you, Jack.
One last comment. We also have a, an annual report that we're required to do. It's available in August, and I think you've been getting them regularly, but we'll get you.
We've got it.
Those on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
We have one other person who's asked to speak, but that's about the taxi and shuttle bus. You'd rather wait and speak then, okay? So that's it for citizens' comments at this time. We've gone to the reports included in our packet, committee reports, Water and Sewer Commission, Bonin, Killian, or Stockhausen. Anything to add?
No addition.
None. No addition. Police and Fire, Den.
No addition.
I have a question.
Yes.
Police and Fire, you went into closed session, you had five applicants, and then, after you came on a closed session, you said you established a hiring pool for the position, which includes Andrew Weber, and I'm asking whether four of the applicants did not qualify or what, how is this to be interpreted?
I'm going to pass that off to the chief.
So what's the size of the pool?
One person will include the other two.
Out of the five?
Out of the five.
And that is the pool? One person? Thank you.
Other reports in the packet, city attorney, itemized statements, Water and Sewer Financial Report, Airport Financial Report, and Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those? All right, seeing none. The first action item this evening is intergovernmental agreement for taxi and bus service, and following that, Contract 614 for bus service, and I would like Amy to have a minute here first.
I just want to say that since this is in conflict with my job, I will be sitting out on this discussion for both Item A and B, and abstaining from the vote for both items as well.
Thank you.
So we will start with staff presentation on the intergovernmental agreement for taxi and bus service.
Thank you very much. Reviewed the comments from last time, prepared this new draft agreement and some of these changes. The changes in your staff report are outlined in bold. The thing that I want to make sure is that the intent of this intergovernmental agreement is to outline the duties and responsibilities of both the university and the city, and it outlines how costs are allocated to both parties. It assumes that the arrangement will continue beyond the one-year trial period and allows for continuing those responsibilities and allocations beyond this period. If the university and/or the council decide to end the relationship after the end of the one-year period, there's provisions for doing that as well. It envisions a joint committee to make operational decisions between now and May with input from both organizations and final approvals by both. And I have a list of some of the decisions and a proposed timeline. Name and logo for the transportation system, rates for the bus, approve the routes, stop, bus stop signs, approve public relations materials, have them printed and distributed, signs hung at the bus stops, and then the bus routes begin on May 16th. Now, in this intergovernmental agreement, the 2015 local share has been identified based on the budget, and for the city, that's $40,839, which is what was approved for last year for the 2014 year, and $75,000 for half of the year for the university. Any change to the city's portion would require a budget amendment approved by the Common Council. Future years, I split as 21.4 percent for the city, 78.6 for the university. That was, that's the percentage as if the city put in its full year, $40,839, and the university put in a full year's worth of $150,000. Federal and state shares is variable. There is a provision so that if the state and federal shares come in lower than what we anticipate, then the city and the university have the option of either increasing the local funding to support the taxi and/or bus, or reducing service levels. The university's local share comes from student fees, and as such, they would ride the bus portion at no cost. Any taxi rides, they would need to provide the appropriate fare. The contractor pays for operational costs of the vehicles, and we will not purchase any buses prior to December 31st, 2017, if, in fact, that we continue with that service. Just so that you understand, there are federal and state grants for up to 80 percent of the cost of the vehicles. The agreement does recognize there are additional costs associated by staff for being the representative of this system. After the comments from last time, we got together and we decided that we would have a flat fee, we would recommend a flat fee in 2015 for administrative costs, marketing, public relations, based, the figure we initially came up with was based on approximately 30 hours of wages and fringes for Director of Public Works, and 10 hours per week for websites, social media, telephonic public relations, and other miscellaneous costs. I did not put the amount in your, in your packet because Amy was going to check with that, and she is saying that the amount was okayed by university management. So the amount being proposed is $12,000. Now, what we're saying is, there's two parts to this. If the shuttle bus does continue, we believe that the administrative burden will be reduced because we will have gone through all the startup items, and that there could be an opportunity to include a lot of these costs as grant costs. The payment system, that was another issue from last time. Currently, the university pays for the tracking technology on the bus. The technology records the numbers and the stop where the person gets on. This technology can also be used by the public if they also purchase a rider card. Right now, they're only for sale at the student union. This can be expanded for use, along with the option to pay cash. We recommend that the bus committee identified earlier, be identified with making an operational recommendation on whether the shuttle system continues to use the tracking system or not, and how it should be paid for. If it's continued, then we'll work on the operational decisions regarding how to sell ridership cards at City Hall and account for those occasional single-use rides. I did have a discussion with Mr. Stratton, and he said that I came up with a concept on how we would do some of those single rides, and he believes that it could be done relatively easily, using, continuing to use that technology that we're talking about, and minimal use of cash by the drivers. However, if neither the university or the city wants to pay for continued use of that tracking system, they will have to convert to a cash payment system, and they'll, they'll just have to deal with it on a cash basis, on a daily basis. The biggest thing would be, we would reduce the ability to do a lot of tracking. They would have to track manually the people getting on and off at different stops. So in the intergovernmental agreement itself, most of that is the same as before. The only thing is that in chap, in paragraph number 17, I changed that to include the flat fee of, and then we would insert $12,000 in that blank space for administrative costs, and then delete the, in the parentheses regarding review by UWP, and then the administrative fee for 2016 and beyond need to be reevaluated annually. And then I talked about, in paragraph 18, new paragraph, talking about the tracking technology, and the last sentence says, "The city shall have the final decision on whether to fund tracking technology." The rest of it is the same. I believe that this addresses many of the concerns that were, that were put forward regarding the intergovernmental agreement. The university is paying more in administrative costs. I don't believe that it would necessarily be fair to ask them to pay more in, for the $150,000 for the operational portion of the bus. I know that one of the council members did ask for that, but I don't underst, you know, I don't know that that's necessarily fair because they're using that, their funds, in different ways, and I don't believe that they would approve of anything like that. So I believe those are the major concerns that were identified last time. If I missed some, I'll try to deal with those as best I can. Staff is recommending approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the insertion of the $12,000.
Okay, Howard, I guess I'll start off with questions if you're ready for them.
Okay.
In some of the wording here, I have a little problem with it. You talk about the Plattville Common Council will have final local authority over decisions, okay? And then down at the very bottom of this paragraph, you come back and say, "The joint committee will make the following operational decisions." I don't think so. They can make recommendations to the council, but they aren't going to make decisions for the council. The problem being here, we're using tax dollars as part of this, and if we're using tax dollars, it's our responsibility to the citizens of the Plattville to make these decisions, not some group that you will put together, okay? And we go a little farther here on the, on the back of the first page, and you go down to, "Staff recommends that bus committee should make the operational decisions." No, they can make recommendations to the council. They're not going to make decisions for us. I mean, this is, this is ridiculous.
That's, in my verbal comments, I corrected the, the written words. You're correct, the final decisions are made by the council. The bus committee makes recommendations for these operational decisions, especially those that impact tax dollars. That would include the tracking system and such like that. Now, if you folks want to have, have final approval on, on the logo or PR materials or things like that, we'll be more than happy to bring those back up to you, but any, any operational concerns that involve, that involve the money, you're right, they do need to come to the council.
And I believe that all this, basically, if anything has anything to do with changes that would be made to this program, that's fine. We need recommendations, that's perfectly fine, but the final decision should be to the council on any of this stuff. The other thing is, now, you did answer one of my questions, because one of them was, I was going to say, this thing wasn't complete because we didn't have the information from the university yet, but Amy was able to get that, I understand, so now we have that dollar value that was included, because that wasn't in the printed material. The other thing is, no place in this governmental agreement does it say how the cash and ridership is going to be handled, who's going to handle it, who's going to share, who gets part of the, who gets some of the money, who doesn't get what percentage of the money that is going to be involved? And I think this needs to be complete. This, no businessman or anyone else would have a contract signed that wasn't complete. Now, if this had everything in it, that's another, just another situation, but, and I also, this is jumping ahead, but into the bus contract, none of that information none of that information is given either, as to how they will track ridership. I'll skip that, we'll go back to that soon enough. But in here, there's nothing in here that's going to handle one-time ridership, one person, cash money, nothing in there. We need to have all this be completed. Thank you.
Other questions?
Did you want a response to some of that?
Yes, if you'd like to respond.
Okay, I'm, okay. Just so that you understand the intent, the way that everything is written, fare revenues belong to the city, okay? The practical matter of this is that, like we do with the taxi, they collect the fares, they deposit the fares, and then, at the end of the month, when they provide their invoice, they identify the number of driver hours that they've performed for that month with the associated cost based on their hourly rates. And then, and then they identify the deduction based on the fare revenue that's collected. And then, the city reimburses them the difference. You can see those in there. And that's the way I would see that the bus contract would work as well. If they have the single fares, $10, $1,000, whatever the amount is, they show it at the end of each month. Now, what happens at the end of the contract periods is DOT comes in and performs an audit. As an example, later this month, DOT is scheduled to perform an audit of our previous taxi contractor. And I'm not an auditor, but I'm assuming that those folks go in and they do the audit checks to assure themselves that they did in fact account properly for the driver hours and account properly for the fare revenues, and continue from there.
But that is in the taxi contract, correct?
Yes, but that's also...
Okay.
Is that also in the bus contract?
That's also part of the bus contract.
But we didn't, I read all that, I didn't find it in here.
Well, actually, you don't have a copy of the contract. I don't have a copy of the contract, I can't find my copy. But I believe that that, the actual operational issue of the taxi and the bus would mirror, in terms of the driver, the time, the revenue, the bus revenue and stuff. Those, those parts of the contract were similar. So we would expect the operation of the taxi, of the bus, to mirror the operation of the bus, in terms of day-to-day happening.
Correct.
Okay.
And that is in writing?
That's the way that it is in our contracts, and in the RFP, and the contract that references the proposals and everything else.
The only thing that's not included in the contract for the bus is the, there's a requirement that tracking be done, but there's not, there's not a methodology or a system either required or suggested. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's part of the recommendation of the, of this joint committee as part of identifying the payment system. If we decide to use the tracking, the payment and tracking system that is currently being used by the university, then payments and ridership information can be tracked by that system. And then, provided through Stratton or through the university directly to us. If we do not, if we do not have, if we do not use that tracking technology, then Stratton will be required to do a manual payment and tracking system in order to provide those reports to the city, so that we can forward those to the DOT.
Has the university agreed to continue to provide the tracking that they currently provide at no cost to this initiative? So, my question is really, have they agreed to continue tracking, predominantly what they've been tracking are students, through student...
Sure.
I want to know if the university has agreed to provide that at no cost, so that this can continue.
I think Amy is probably better suited to answer that one.
Amy Siebel Wilson, I am the Sustainability Coordinator at UW Platteville. And part of my job requires that I oversee alternative transportation, which includes the bus, which is why I'm here today on this side of the conversation. So, in short answer to your question, the university has not agreed. And that is because that is a decision that needs to be made by a broader stakeholder group than I was able to make in my position, or the administration's been able to make. So we've proposed that there is a committee, that joint committee, that reviews how they think the bus should be best, the ridership should be tracked, and payments should be handled. And the reason to that...
Amy, that's not my question. My question isn't how it will be tracked. My question is simply, would the university agree, if this committee says this is the best way to do it, to continue to provide this tracking at no cost in this contract? Because that's what I will be suggesting. I will be suggesting that, in the event that the committee determines that this is the best tracking system, that the expectation is that the university will continue to provide that at no charge to the city.
It's premature to answer that question because the decision-makers haven't discussed it. And they won't be able to discuss it for a couple months still, likely. It'll take a while to make that decision. And quite frankly, it falls on the way the RFP's been written and the way these structures happen in other cities. It's Stratton Bus's responsibility as the bus provider to do tracking. So typically, it would work manually. In most communities, it's a cash-based system, where the bus provider tracks cash. And at worst-case scenario, that's where the city ends up. I'm assuming that it won't go that direction, that the discussion would find that everybody may like the electronic tracking system, but that's like the Cadillac of tracking systems. And if the committee does decide they want it that way, then it would be up to the committee to discuss who's paying for it. And if they recommend that the university pays for it because it's of value to the students who are here in the audience, and it's their money, then the students agree to pay for it. If the committee doesn't think it's worth it, then nobody pays for it. And you use regular manual tracking, like most every other city in Wisconsin who has a bus does, of our size. Obviously, Madison and Milwaukee have better tracking systems. Partly what's hap...
That's fine. I have a question of Howard now. Howard, in the contract, does it stipulate, in the bus contract, does it stipulate what kind of information the bus contractor will provide in terms of, so I mean, we would get, I mean, I know that for the taxi, we've asked for when people are riding, how many people are riding per hour, the destinations they're going to, et cetera, et cetera. So does the bus contract clearly stipulate what kind of tracking must be provided to the city and to the university?
Actually, it was in the request for proposals. It's based on DOT tracking requirements. I don't remember which items they specifically track beyond, beyond number of riders. There, whether they're required to track the number of riders for DOT purposes. But those reports that are required for them to submit to us, to submit forward to DOT, are listed in that RFP. And those are the tracking numbers, the data numbers that they need. Driver hours, fare revenues, ridership, at the bare minimum. And I can't recall the rest of them at this point.
Because I know we asked our taxi contractor to provide us with detailed information about the number of riders per hour, so that we could make decisions relative to, so my, that's where my question lies. I mean, eventually, you have to analyze data...
Sure.
...to make decisions about what goes on. And if we have, decisions are only as good as the data that's provided.
True.
Amy, I have a question. If the tracking system goes by the wayside, and it has to be manually tracked on the bus, okay, shuttle, will the students then have to pay the fare, just like everybody else?
No, the way the...
How will you track that, then, if you don't, if you're not going to use that? Isn't the ID card part of the tracking system?
Well, for the past, just so everybody's aware, for the past two years, the buses, this is the third year of operation. This is the first year we use a digital tracking system. Previously, we had a manual tracking system, much like we would revert back to if people don't want to pay for the Cadillac tracking system. And in that case, bus drivers requested to see student IDs.
So that was just...
And you tracked manually who got on, not who, they tracked how many people got on at each stop all day, got on and off, actually. So it was a very comprehensive data set, and that's what the drivers had been doing for the past two years.
Got this digital data set.
So, the card that the students use for monetary value was just also part of the tracking system?
It's their student ID.
So if the tracking system could go away, the card still amounts to the dollar?
Yep, yep, it's a student ID with a picture on it.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Well, regardless, the tracking system will have student versus non-student?
Correct, it should. And I think that would be a relatively easy thing to write as an amendment into the contract. So Stratton's clear that that's an expectation. Should we manually track, we need to know who's a student and who's not. And the university, I would imagine, would expect that as well. Or desire that.
Okay.
I'm very encouraged to see that there's recognition that there's a lot more to this than one hour a month for twelve months, in terms of city involvement. I have no clue if $12,000 is what it'll cost, if it's more or less. My question is, there's a lot of PR materials, new bus stop signs, hanging bus stop signs, et cetera. Is that also covered by the $12,000? Or where will we see those expenditures?
The intent is that any of that, any of those costs that are sustained by the city would have to come from that $12,000. The actual PR materials are, per the contract, you mentioned last time, that flyers and other things like that, promotional materials, are in the contract as a responsibility of Stratton Bus.
I was a little surprised to see approved the rates for the bus in the operational decisions of the joint committee, particularly as it related to the information we were given before, that there was an expectation that the bus will generate $10,000 in revenue from riders this year. So it seemed to me that there must have been some estimate of not only the number of riders, but also the amount that they would pay per ride in order to come up with that $10,000 figure. Is that correct?
It was, it was an estimate.
Based on?
Based on what I felt was appropriate, what I thought was reasonable at the time, thinking about individual rides at approximately a dollar per ride, and, you know, certain...
That would be individual, I mean, that's the only, I mean, it's either...
Or getting a swipe card at $30, or whatever the price is. What we're looking for here is for a joint committee to review that, and to recommend whatever they're, whatever they believe the appropriate amount to be, back to the city council for final approval. My guess is it will be somewhere around the $1 a ride, $30 for the card. And then, we would look at it again. If we decide to continue with the bus in future years, we would look at whether or not that was appropriate. It was an estimate, now...
The initial review of this will occur at the end of 2015, or the end of 2016, or the middle of 2016? It says, it's a yearly, or...
As part, well, this kind of goes into the contract portion. But I understand that the council minutes of September 23rd talked about a one-year period with a review. It depends on what the council believes is an appropriate review, whether that includes identifying it, and then allowing it to continue, or identifying it and making a affirmative vote to continue the process. The contract, as the template from the DOT, looks at a two-year period. And because of the fact that we're starting in the middle of 2015, their recommendation is that the contract itself be locked in from the starting time of May 16th, 2015, until December 31st, 2016. Yeah, 2015 to 2000, the end of 2016, a little bit more than one year. What that does is that gets us onto the same cycle as the taxi. I apologize if this was, if this confuses people, and if this is not the intent, we can discuss about it again during the discussion regarding the contract. But I believe that this, you know, meets the intent and helps us get through an initial period with the bus. And that we would review that contract toward the end of 2016.
Just for the council's note, we do have one person who wants to speak on this, so I would like to allow that person to do that. But if anybody else has more questions for staff, please, go ahead and ask them.
I have one quick question, Howard.
Okay.
When we discussed that this was, as the minutes that you referred to here, that it would be reviewed at the end of one year, so we discussed it as a one-year contract, then why did you go into three, four, five, six-year, and all that other stuff? Why didn't you wait before you even came up with that, until we discussed it at the end of the first year? Maybe there's a reason for it, help me out here, because I'm not sure why.
The DOT's template is for up to five years. And so, in order to get it onto the same cycle as the taxi, as I stated before, the taxi, the contract portion for the taxi is technically over with December 31st, 2016. And then, at that point, there are three one-year option periods that can be, that can be granted, to extend that contract through the end of 2019. The bus contract is a similar thing. So the contract would end December 31st, 2016, with three option years. The city has the option at the end of the initial contract period to not renew the contract. We can, we can not renew the contract with this provider and put it out for bid to a new, for new providers. Or we could terminate the contract and be done with that service. And so, that's why in the RFP and the contracts, it talks about the option years through the end of 2019.
Thank you.
Getting back to the $10,000, is that, Howard, your estimate as far as non-student revenue?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Christensen, if you would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Rich Christensen, and I live at 10 South Third Street in the downtown area. Only one bid was put forward for the city of Platteville's taxi service. That bid was... That bid was recommended by the evaluation committee and approved on December 22nd by the common council. Arrangements were apparently made so that the new taxi service provider would more or less take over from the previous provider, and then things would stay very much the same. For the resi, for the city, the result of this deal between the new taxi service provider and the previous provider was a lone bid and a 7.5% increase in price from $24.99 per hour to $26.88 per hour. Perhaps the common council should have asked some questions. There is now a single bid in front of the common council for shuttle bus service, and it is recommended by the same evaluation committee. The bid is for a 6.1% decrease in price from $44.25 per hour to $41.55 per hour. Under the circumstances, a 7.5% increase for taxi service at the same time as a 6.1% decrease for shuttle bus service doesn't seem to make sense. Is something funny going on? Was the recently formed three-person evaluation committee handpicked by Howard Crowfoot and Amy Seboth Wilson? Would it surprise anyone if the committee members or people Seboth Wilson knew or worked with, or someone she asked to speak at the September 23rd public hearing? Again, maybe the common council should ask some questions. Regarding the shuttle bus, Seboth Wilson obviously has a terrible conflict of interest. It took too long for the other council members to recognize this. Seboth Wilson has controlled the information from the start and continues to exert undue influence over the process. The shuttle bus is likely the main reason she ran for a position on the common council. This is about her job at the university, and it is about her salary. This is about a couple hundred thousand dollars for the department she manages. Is anyone surprised by, by how things have unfolded? Did you think the $19,527 and 11 cents in savings for the city dangled in front of the common council by Southwestern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission was really going to happen? If you did, perhaps you should watch the feasibility study presentation again. Take note of what information was presented and all the information that should have been presented but wasn't. Take special note of how many times SWRPC's favorite word, potentially, was added to a sentence when they wanted the common council to believe something would happen that they knew wasn't going to happen. SWRPC worked with and for Seboth Wilson and delivered a presentation to the common council that was intended to mislead. There is really no other way to explain so much manipulated information and so much needed information that was not presented. At the September 23rd public hearing, the common council was asked how much SWRPC was paid for the feasibility study, and they didn't answer the question. That question will be asked again in a couple of minutes, and we'll see if the common council answers the question, if they have city staff answer the question, or if they again withhold that information from the public. Before, it was SWRPC's doing Amy Seboth's bidding. Now it seems to be Howard Crowfoot doing her bidding. The common council recently asked Crowfoot for a summary of the numbers related to the shuttle bus, but are they in any way satisfied with the information he provided? The multiple budgets he drew up are in no way adequate, are not accurate, and seem intentionally misleading. The September 24th Platteville Journal reported university enrollment figures of 7,975 undergraduate students and 830 graduate students for a total of 8,805. The city has been told that $30 per student in fees is being collected for the operation of the shuttle bus. The city has been told that the university will contribute $150,000 per year going forward. The attitudes of Seboth Wilson and the university seem to be that the city should accept whatever they say and should not ask questions. How much profit is the university, university making from the shuttle bus? Could it be $90,000? Probably not, but who knows? Seboth Wilson and the university are not being open and honest with the city about the revenue and expenses of the shuttle bus. They are simply not providing the information the common council needs in order to make an informed decision. Especially troubling is having no idea what the true and total expenses of the shuttle bus are now or will be in the future. Those expenses would fall on the city. If the university has been making a profit from the shuttle bus, collecting from students much more than what it costs, that would explain why they are so intent on locking in that $150,000 amount. That would also explain why the shuttle bus is still operating, even though it has not performed well enough and it has not been effective. How many times must empty shuttle buses drive by before someone asks questions? How many shuttle bus rides have been taken by students? How many shuttle bus rides have been taken by others? For each of the five semesters the shuttle bus has been, been in existence. Ten simple numbers to get started. Yet those numbers were never even touched upon by SWRPC in their present, presentation, never by Seboth Wilson, never by Crowfoot. There's a reason Seboth Wilson doesn't want anyone to even mention those numbers.
Mr. Christensen, you, you're at five minutes, so could you wrap up, please?
I have just a couple more paragraphs.
Okay.
If just 10% of university students really needed and really used the shuttle bus, more than 100,000 rides would be provided in a semester. Seboth Wilson, eight months before she became a councilperson, reported to the common council at its August 13th, 2003 meeting, that 9,000 rides were provided the first semester and 26,000 rides the second semester. Yes, both those numbers are too small, but was Seboth Wilson's explanation for the increase accurate? There is some hard-to-find, hard-to-interpret information that shows 17,113 rides that originated at Roundtree Commons. Was Roundtree Commons built so far away from the student center that a bus is required? Certainly not. Were changes made to put shuttle buses in front of Roundtree Commons at the best times each morning in order to increase and inflate the numbers? Probably. If the bus is right there, even 18 to 22-year-olds will jump on it rather than walk four blocks, which takes seven minutes. What should the common council do now? It's simple, and it's not too late. Do not accept, approve, or agree to anything until you have all the information you want and all the information you need in order to make an informed decision. Do not start this in the middle of the year. The university can easily extend its contract one semester for its student shuttle. Regarding the shuttle bus, I'm not surprised by how things have turned out.
I think, Mr. Christensen, your time is up. I've been very generous, you're at eight minutes now, so thank you for your comments.
You missed the last two paragraphs.
Thank you.
Mr. Bede, go on, patient.
I'm concerned about abusing and making comment on one of our council members. I think that needs to, and this council needs to talk about these things among, as a group, and to attack one member is simply not appropriate. Thank you.
All right. I would extend that to staff members.
If the city council wants, we can explore policies on how to govern public comments so that it's not an attacking environment.
I would encourage some kind of a system or concept or policy to be put together on that.
I would encourage people to consider their comments before they make them.
One more question for Howard.
Yes.
The, the steel posts, the signs, and the labor to put one in, what are the cost factors on that? Because I'm, I'm thinking about the $12,000 that we're talking about, because there'll be a considerable number of those added to the community if this goes through. What's the cost on that? Just, any ideas or just-
I believe-
Tell me later.
Labor and equipment is somewhere around $100 per sign.
Per sign, okay.
That's, that's a rough figure that we've used for most of our regulatory and parking signs.
That could pick up quite a bit of your $12,000 then, the way you're talking about extending the route. That's just my comment. Thank you.
All right, we've had a pretty good discussion on this. We're ready for council action? Am I to assume that in the intergovernmental agreement, that the number now, that this has been modified in number 17 to say the university shall pay $12,000, a flat fee of $12,000 for administrative costs and public relations in 2015? And that, and the administrative fee for 2016 and beyond are to be reevaluated annually?
Yes, that, that would be my recommendation.
During the city's budget discussions in the fall of each year?
Correct.
And, and, okay. And- I think the other point, excuse me, Barb, was that Mike had brought up about decisions, and the, the word would be recommendations. The committee would be recommendations. Yeah, but is that in this, the committee may recommend the system, I'm looking at actually the intergovernmental agreement. The intergovernmental agreement.
Number two does mention recommendations.
And, yeah, I'm going back to the, look at the government. Number two. And number 18 in this intergovernmental agreement, the tracking technology currently in use by the university shuttle bus will be evaluated for continued use by the joint committee. Any costs associated with the continued use of the tracking technology shall be recommended to the city and university for payment.
The city shall have the final-
The city shall have the final decision on whether to fund the tracking technology.
Yes.
I, I have a question as to, I know Mr. Stratton isn't here tonight, but I have a question as to whether he has been a party to this discussion about tracking and tracking technology and riderships.
Well, I, I have talked with, I have talked with Mr. Stratton, and he likes that current tracking technology. It makes things a lot simpler for him than to require his drivers to do things manually if it's done electronically. But he also understands that, that there are costs involved, and that's, you know, that, that's not, that part is not his purview. But if he had his preference, it would be to retain the current technology.
Is there a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion-
Intergovernmental agreement?
That we table this so we get more information as to who's going to pay for what and what they will pay for. In the back, there's one particular thing that says that, that we've been involved in drafting the agreement and working with the university to prepare an agreement. This draft has been approved by the city attorney, but that's not done yet as far as from the university standpoint. I would like to see this completed. Everything on here, the cost, the factors, how the tracking system is going to work or it's not going to work, I want this all in this agreement. So we need to discuss this further, and hopefully the university will come forward with their information so that we can include it in this, so we really know what we're talking about, instead of having it added on maybe partial, partly, after we've already agreed to something. So I make a motion that we table this agreement so we can discuss it in a work session.
Eileen runs the meeting.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, it's non-debatable. We'll vote. Den?
Yes.
Dos?
No.
Stackhausen?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Motion fails. So any other motion on the taxi-bus intergovernmental agreement? My concern with this continues to be the tracking technology, and it's the payment for that. And so I could make a motion to approve the proposed intergovernmental agreement, modifying number 18 to include wording that relative to the university's continuing to provide the tracking technology. And with the other changes that have been proposed? The other changes that have been proposed. If, if the tracking technology is determined to be by the Platteville Transit System Bus Operations Joint Committee and recommended, if that is, that it would be the expectation that the university would continue to provide that at no charge. With motion, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
We'll vote. Den?
No.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is the contract, 614 bus service. Howard.
Okay. Now that we've, now that we've discussed the intergovernmental agreement, this is based on the proposal for fixed route bus service. Russ Stratton was in fact the only proposer for this system. Just so that you folks understand what happens as part of the DOT's procedures, there is this thing called VendorNet that they, they require us to use that puts it out on the internet for service providers, and it has a key that gives the code number for this type of a service, and it sends an email to 100 or so providers that have signed up on VendorNet that says that they provide that sort of service. And they, so these people have had notice that, that this was a possibility. I did have questions from a service in the Milwaukee area during the RFP process. They obviously chose not to submit a proposal. As we discussed before, we had an evaluation committee comprised of three individuals, a student, a staff member, and then a citizen who neither works for the university, is not affiliated with, with the university, but through, through their employment is concerned about senior transportation. The committee met and recommended a word of the bus contract. As we had discussed, the initial term of this contract would be from May 16th through December 31st, 2016, and if extended in those option years, could run through December 31st, 2019. The, the budget, we assumed was one price, and the actual bid price came in lower. Sometimes it happens that way. I'm glad that it did, and the savings will offset the, the increase in the taxi operation. So at this point, staff recommends a word of contract 6-14 bus service to Russ Stratton buses at the contract price of $41.55 per hour.
Howard, once again, my question's basically similar, similar to the other one. There's nothing in this contract whatsoever that talks about cost of ridership per fare, per an individual, how it's to be handled, how it's to be collected. There's no information on tracking whatsoever, how it would be tracking, how would they do it? Would they do it the way we have the taxi system set up? There's nothing in there to talk about this. And this, if this is the contract, obviously, for the shuttle bus, we need that information. I don't want to see something added later, and then the question I might bring up is, well, how come that's in here? And you will tell me that we voted on this contract- And you will tell me that we voted on this contract and we either approved it or we didn't. But if we did approve it, but it's not on there, it can be added later. I just have a real problem with not everything being completed. Thank you.
I think we discussed it.
Howard, you provided us at one point a copy of the RFPs. Is that right?
I believe so, yes.
I can't, I just can't find it because the RFP would have, I mean, it was at an earlier council meeting and I'm looking back in my council packets and, you know, I've gone back to like November, but I still can't find it. So I don't know if I'm just daft or?
I think it would have been December 22nd.
When?
December 22nd?
It's not in my electronic packet for December 22nd. So if the RFP was provided, it was provided prior to that. And I can't, I just can't find it. I wanted to, because you said this was outlined in the RFP?
Most of this, most of this information was outlined in the RFP, yes. I need to?
When you say most, that doesn't mean all that we asked for, correct? I know it's hard because you don't have it in front of you. I understand that. But you can understand why we need all that.
The documents are clearly half an inch thick and it's not something where we wanted to photocopy the documents for distribution. Typically, the council hasn't desired that.
I'm confident that if the taxi, we have had success with the taxi contract for years and years and years. And this RFP basically mirrored the taxi contract in terms of its requirements. So I'm confident that if those two mirror each other and we have been satisfied with the way the taxi has operated and the fee schedule and that kind of thing, that we will, that, that there's no, there's no reason for concern. So if I could find the, my packet now, since I'm on the wrong packet.
It's in there.
While Barb is still, excuse me, while Barb is still looking for that, Howard, when you say it mirrors the taxi, okay, is it going to mirror the taxi based on what DOT requires or the extra things that we asked for to have on that taxi contract as to far as ridership, different types of riderships, times, dates, most active times of the day when we had more riders? Is it mirror that or is it just mirror the DOT requirements?
It mirrors the DOT requirements. I'm trying to pull, I'm trying to pull it up here myself here.
Okay, that leaves off a lot of things that we want, that we added to that taxi contract where we wanted to know the differences of riderships, whether they're elderly or handicap or, and the times of day where they most, just like the report that we got from the taxis recently. We want, I want to see that as far as the shuttle's concerned.
The reports that the taxi provides are the ones that the DOT requires. So I, you know, I'm not sure what we, what we're going to be able to do. Now, even with tracking technology, I don't know that we're going to be able to differentiate between non-student handicap, non-student seniors, non-student child under 18 necessarily. We'll have to look at what the technology is able to do for us.
We do that with the taxi and that's because we have a very functional program. We know exactly what's going on and how to rate it. If you want us to be able to evaluate that shuttle in the proper fashion for the benefit of everybody in this community, we need that information.
That contract is available in Howard Crowfoot's office. I know you've been there a few times over the last month and a half. If you want it, we can run and go get it or you could ask to see it at any time in the past or in the future.
Okay, that's fine. But what I'm asking, Howard, right now, is, is it going to do the same thing that we do on the taxi? He's just telling me now probably not. So then how can we evaluate something if we don't have all the information that we really need to do it properly?
Well, in either case, I understood your comment, Howard, your response. The DOT has certain criteria that must be met and you are the person that the DOT has as far as the city contact.
Correct.
So that information that the DOT requires for the taxi is also required for the shuttle bus, is that correct?
Yes.
So the same information will be provided.
Yeah, and that's, that's in this, that's in this template here. I'm trying to pull that up to see exactly what those, what those reports are.
And the intergovernmental agreement may have asked for additional information, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the DOT did. Is that correct?
Correct.
Barb, if you still have your council packet up, it's December 22nd. It was the taxi service. If you remember, the taxi service and the bus service shared an RFP.
December 27th? Oh, I've got that packet. I thought I'd.
I have it here.
Yep, I'm opening it now too. Such a large file that it takes a while to open up on electronic devices, which is why they don't photocopy it.
The contract for the taxi service or the contract for the bus?
The request for proposal.
The title of the document isn't request for proposal.
Oh.
It's the taxi one.
Okay. I'm going back into my.
You're looking for the taxi one? Is that one?
There we go.
One of the things in the RFP, describe the officer, offerers' procedures for reporting activity to the municipality, including summaries of all trips, ridership and revenue by day and on a cumulative monthly basis. That was one of the items in here. Describe the officers' plan, offerers' plan to collect an account for revenue and provide secure procedures for handling transactions, handling cash and transactions.
Thank you for answering that, Howard.
So it does say it can have, we can have that information by ridership. So basically that would be handicap, elderly, so on and so forth, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then we, as long as we can have that, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, I move approval of the contract with Stratton Bus Service, which would be contract 614 for bus service in accordance with recommendations of the evaluation committee at a contract price of 41.55 per hour, starting on May 16th, 2015, with evaluation at the end of what would be the first probably 18, 19 months, December 31st, 2016.
Is there a second? Yes.
I had to find your last figure.
All right, there's a second. So there is no further conversation, we'll vote.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We're on to information and discussion. First item in your packet is a resolution to update the employee handbook.
Since the employee handbook was last updated, there have been three substantial changes that needed to be updated. The first one was back in 2011, we made some changes to our employee organization chart. As a result of those changes, the director of external services was added to the handbook. That position has never been created. Two other positions that were formerly department head positions are no longer. Those are the finance director and the city clerk. They both report to the director of administration and finance. The second change in the employee handbook is that in 2014, the city council reinstated the 40-hour work week, which began January 5th. Those changes needed to be reflected in the handbook. And then thirdly, there were changes to the Wisconsin retirement system by the state of Wisconsin and we simply updated that to change a word to add any eligible employees instead of the way it was described previously. Those are the three changes to the employee handbook that are being proposed via this resolution.
What's the definition of an eligible employee?
I believe previously it had been 600 hours and now you can be in the WRS if you work 1,000 hours a year.
It's been increased?
Yes, it has. It used to be 600 hours and now it's substantially more. Yep.
It's become more restrictive.
Any other questions on the employee handbook?
Is that a state, that's WRS?
Yep, that's a state decision.
State change. Next item, annexation rezoning 680 East Business Highway 151. Joe?
Yeah, we received a request for annexation for the property at 680 East Business Highway 151. It's the northeast corner of Business 151 and Mineral Street. That property is currently vacant. The property owners have submitted the annexation petition. Property itself is 1.9 acres in size approximately. It's contiguous to the existing city limits on two sides. Water and sewer are already available as well as city street access. If, if the annexation's approved, they would also request rezoning of that property to be three highway business. I mean, that's the kind of the standard zoning for the commercial businesses, properties along that area. It's currently zoned C1 commercial now in the ET area, so it wouldn't be much of a change from that. But the property owner does have a developer that's interested in that property for retail development, so the developer would be interested in having city services. So that's kind of the, the reason for the request for the annexation at this time. Plan Commission did consider this request at their last meeting and recommended approval of the annexation rezoning. So that will be on for your consideration at the next meeting. Any questions?
I have one. You're saying that a retail organization is interested?
Yes.
Where are they going to come in and out of that corner? If anybody's driven through there as many times as I have, it is very difficult to avoid an accident.
They're going to be?
So how are they going to come in and out?
They're going to be using the existing driveway. It'll be a shared driveway with the clinic.
With the clinic?
And the storage units to the rear. So they will expand the width of that driveway a little bit so they have enough for basically one entrance lane and then a right turn and a left turn exiting lane. But it'll be, the driveway will be at the same location that it is now.
Is that in this agreement?
No, that will be on the certified survey map, which is coming up for approval at the next plan commission meeting.
Actually, if I could jump in, Joe, there's hash marks all along the property edge and those hash marks, if you look to the, say, no highway access as per state transportation 233. So we look at the CSM map, Barb, and you'll see the little hash marks all the way around the lot. So that lot cannot access the roadway. It has to go through a different lot.
Oh, thank you. I had a real concern about traffic patterns at that corner. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question on that? All right, Columbach Property Update.
Yeah, just for information, of the 12 properties that the city council had previously agreed we would sell, all 12 of those have been sold. They were sold before the end of the year. Of those, we already received some activity, or they're receiving some activity from the purchasers. The 260 South Chestnut and the 235 Third Street, Riegerfeller's Enterprises bought those. They have received building permits already and have started doing some work on those. One of those are, although the 235 Third Street is one that's subject to that appeal, so I don't expect them to do much work on that. I think they just did a furnace upgrade just to get them through the winter. The 185 Center Street property, Dressler's Properties, has raised that structure and they have begun work on the new house on that property. 430 South Chestnut Street, that's Dressler Properties. That's a similar situation, is subject to that appeal. So he's putting all his effort right now into the Center Street property and we'll tackle the other one when that appeal is finalized. 310 West Gridley Straight Arrow LLC, they've also started doing significant work on that property to remodel that. 370 Irene Street, Irish Properties, they have also raised that one and they're planning on doing the construction this spring when the weather allows. And then the County Highway B property, that also is subject to that appeal. So unfortunately, he's, he was very anxious to get going, but he's going to wait on any substantial work on that property until that's done. The three properties that the city decided to maintain, those structures have been raised and the property filled in to bring the grade back to its previous state. So that's where we are at the moment. Any questions?
I want to say thank you to the staff. This has been a really big project and it's lasted a very long time. So I think it's very exciting that we actually sold all the properties by the end of the year like we expected and I believe we financially did very well too. We got at least back what we needed to, that we had put into them. So thank you guys for the hard work and perseverance. I really appreciate it.
And I appreciate being able to come to the corner of Mineral and Water Street and be able to look to the south and actually see if there's a car coming or not.
And one more thing I want to mention too is an extra thank you for Howard. We didn't talk about this, I don't believe, at a meeting thus far, but for the three properties that the city raised, I believe Habitat for Humanity was able to go in and take as much as they could from the properties prior to them being tore down so that the buildings went back to good use in many ways in our community, hopefully. So that was pretty wonderful too, that staff took the extra time to have Habitat for Humanity come out and do that. So thank you for that as well.
I would also like to thank the staff on that. I worked with you on it, the committees, as long as Amy has. And thank you very much for the direction and the good work that we got done.
Now, I'm really excited to see the new houses that will be going up in Platteville.
So thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on that? All right, we have two closed sessions, so we need a motion to?
I move that we go into closed session per Wisconsin statute 1985 par. 1 par. 8 deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties for possible land acquisition. I'm not reading. And then a second closed session per Wisconsin state statute 1985 par. 1 par. 8 considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data and specifically review executive search proposals, return to open session and take action if necessary.
Second.
A motion and a second, we'll vote.
Seboz Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll take a five-minute break, folks.